All right, good evening, everyone. We'd like to call our special city council budget meeting to order. Thank you all for joining for the special meeting. Item two point O is the prayer. Well, to Mr. Councilman, if you can hear if you would mind.
I have my last.
Okay, that Mr. McNair over there.
Dear Lord, we thank you for giving us an opportunity to come back together again and go about doing the business of the citizens' affairs. Lord, we're at a crucial time in our schedule as we deal with budgets. We understand Father, how how things have changed and sometimes the struggle to meet certain budgets. So what we ask you to help us with this budget. We ask you also, Father, to help us with employees throughout the city. And oh, and oh, and oh, what we thank you for tonight. That is be tuned into presentations that will be given to us. Jesus name, pray.
Uh, pledge allegiance first flag. Okay, the proverbial flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, moving along, council to item four point O is the approval of the agenda. All right, most by Councilman Thompson, their second, second by Councilmember Mayor. Discussion on the motion. All right, council, those in favor, those who are hands. The agenda, council, we're not very good. All right, that is perfect, unanimous. So councils, moving to items of business. Thank you again for your patience and thank you so much for this evening. As we go through the budget process, kind of over the last few budgets, like I said, it worked very well. It worked not so well and everything in between. I know that we have a lot, we have a lot of upcoming issues and changes and nuances. We have additional federal dollars. So I know we were having some smaller meetings with staff members to do it. Want to kind of provide an environment that all of us will be able to get up to kind of work through some of the questions and challenges. Knowing that ultimate goal is to have it adopted before June thirty, which is coming up. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Yates and
Good evening, council. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor mentioned, we've been started some council briefings on the budget and getting some detail. So for today, what we want to do is talk a little bit about the process, our status and calendar. Look at our success map and celebrate, really celebrate those things which we've done and done well and the vision that you have had as a council has been carried out. Look at our historical general fund revenue, look at some sales tax analysis. Talk about some budgetary considerations. These are things that are on our radar as we start to develop or start the decision-making phase going into next year's budget. And then look at some long-term strategies that staff has to put forward as ways to balance. And then we want to talk through, after that, we'll turn it back to the mayor and really we want to listen and get information and get thoughts from you as a council concerning that process. This is just the very beginning of it from the council perspective. As we talk about this, the most important thing we can do during this process is have a dialogue. It's a process of talking through the issues, talking about different ways to approach topics. You as a council, talking to us about policy, giving us guidance and staff coming back to you with effective and efficient ways to implement that guidance. We want to talk about internal, the internal process. Staff has been working on the budget since last fall. And all through the spring. So this flips over to kind of the public budget development process. And in doing so, the county, the city manager and the team, we're here to listen. We really want to take back and really understand where you're at in your perspective in this process. And that's going to be done through really two big, our two major ways to do that. We're going to do council briefings. As the mayor mentioned, we've already had one and we'll continue that process. And then also through that public work sessions and public hearings. We have planned in May, at least two agendaized work sessions, at least one public hearing in accordance with the general statute and additional work sessions if needed, with all with the goal of wrapping up. As I was told, I was a little too, little too optimistic, probably wanting to finish by the end of May. But right now, we are trying to slate adoption either the last meeting in May or the first meeting in June. Recognizing that that first meeting in June is also one of the travel days related to the All American Cities presentation in Denver. So that calendar is valuable. I believe we shared with you and you've seen on your calendars, different meetings and different things pop up. So we're, that is always being adjusted and working on based on your needs and our needs and kind of the schedule in that process. As we go through, please stop me asking any questions you have. I'm happy to answer those. I'm happy to talk through those. We have staff here. And if we don't have an answer to your question, we're happy to go back researching and bring it back to you. And the city manager will be here momentarily. So the first thing.
Before you move to action items, let's talk about the calendar. What, uh, before there, there were times where staff and staff departments came by, by section or department to make pitch to council about things they thought they needed in the upcoming budget and prepare themselves for. And to make connections between what they were asking for and the part, part of the council. As you break that calendar down, how does all of that line up to when you'll have something for us to look at?
Sure. So the way that the calendar breaks down is the manager's proposed budget will come out sometime in early May. Our recommended budgets, and that will include those new activities, those new things and new rates and those other things. If the council wishes to hear from department directors at that point, then we can get that, certainly get that slated and have those folks. So we have those public work sessions scheduled. Right now, we don't have an agenda for those. So my suggestion would be, when you get the manager's budget, if there's a particular area of interest, then we can have those folks come and talk and talk through those, those areas. So we have time for it. We just haven't slated it specifically yet. So you all have a copy of this. We provided it to you. And you've seen this. This is a really good look back as we, we talked about looking at twenty twenty-one and twenty-two and all the great things the city has done related to CARES Act, the Merchandise Corridor, Choice Neighborhood Program and planning. You had the senior center opening, the Bill Crisp Center and everything else. And I think that the point of this exercise or looking at this is really to say, you know, the city's really been progressive in the way that it's looked at as projects and the way that it's moved forward in its judicious use of its resources. Okay, pushing us forward and how we are achieving your vision and the council's vision. You know, this, the things that are in twenty twenty obviously go back to the sixteen, seventeen, eighteen timeframe, probably even further back than that. And we talked about some of the things, if we were to draw a column out over here, what the twenty twenty-three column would look like. Those things include the ninety-seven million dollar bond program, the downtown social district, the additional breaking ground on our, the Tawney Ceremony at the Fire Station Four, the, the Tawney Ceremony over at the Senior Center East. All of those things, and I, and I know I didn't name them all. There's a whole bunch that we sat with you all and talked through it, then we listed. But it really is to say, kind of celebrate the vision that you have set for the city and what we've been able to achieve. And the challenge now is going to be, how do we continue that path forward to achieve that vision? And what does that vision look like going forward? So when we start that conversation, the way that we, you know, the way that we like to talk about it in budget at least, is really start with our resources. What's available for that? So we look back over our general fund revenues. And this is look back all the way to twenty seventeen, twenty seventeen actual, all the way up to the budgeted twenty twenty-three numbers. And I have a couple of things I want to highlight for you. On the adware and taxes, as you can see, this is just adware and property taxes. Shouldn't touch that. But this is not including vehicles. But if you were to take the average growth compounded over time, there's about a quarter percent growth on your property taxes, your real property taxes, meaning construction, expansion and expansion and new construction in that timeframe. Now, when you add vehicles to that, it gets a little higher. But you can see that adds a couple hundred thousand in some cases, for instance, and between twenty and twenty-one, added under, just under a couple of million dollars to the equation and so forth. Now, I highlighted this twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen for you because we had some conversation about when was the last time revow happened? And that was the timeframe. The revow occurred early in this, earlier from twenty twenty, or in twenty seventeen with the effect in twenty eighteen. And the council at the time set their revenue neutral or less rate. And the impact of that ended up being a reactual real reduction in the adware revenue. And then you can see it went down and then picked back up and continued to grow. The other intergovernmental revenues, this is where your sales taxes are. And I highlighted twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one because something happened here that was unique. This was COVID. Everybody remembers COVID. And we saw this incredible growth between these two years in sales taxes. And we'll look at that in just a minute in a little more detail because we have some detailed sales tax analysis. But this is one of the reasons why, if you look out over this time, the stair step gets a little steeper, that you were able to achieve so much of the twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-one vision, because during twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, between those two years, you saw a lot of that growth. The other thing I'll point out is on the other revenues, there's a big jump going from three point two million to eight point four, then back down to three point three. This is when I believe you sold Festival Plaza, the office building. So there was about a five and a half million dollar one-time injection of revenue and other revenues. It was a sale of an asset. But as you can see, if you were to take this line and look at it and compare actual twenty-two against actual twenty seventeen, you would see that growth is right around two and a half percent on a compound average basis. And that's just a measure of normal growth, all else being equal. So you can see what your revenue is doing. And you can see that growth and we put it on a graphic because again, where you see these steps, you know, you have a little bit of growth going between twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, but then you see these much bigger jumps in the revenue. And I think that that's important to remember, that that's what drove your ability to do a lot of these things and a lot of these projects. Yes, sir.
You said that, um, that steep jump twenty twenty-one was due to the sales tax.
Was due to, so during COVID, people stayed home. And what we saw nationally is a trend and here locally as well as the state is when people started buying online, we started catching that revenue. So what I would say is in this case, the, the consumer fundamentally changed their buying power and their buying habits. Because we didn't retreat, you didn't see a reduction in sales tax. You saw that new base pop up and then settle out as kind of their way, the, their normal buying habit, right?
It was just purchasing, you know, not necessarily a rate.
Right, the rate did not, I'm sorry, the rate didn't go up. It was the, the use.
Legislation came in where online sales go to the jurisdiction.
Right.
So that, that helped out.
Right. So they started using CITIS as part of that equation. But the city benefited it. And it was interesting because I was in North Carolina and Arizona during these times. So I kind of got a little bit of a blend of states during these conversations. We really did think, we didn't realize this was going to happen. This was, this was an interesting trend from that perspective, but it benefited the city greatly from that perspective. And like I said, was able to drive those other programs. So really then, when we take a step back and compare, okay, your adware is your single largest revenue. In North Carolina municipalities have very limited revenue authority or ability to create new revenue sources. So they can follow what's available to them in the general statute. The biggest one of that, like I said, is adware. The other part of that is going to be the sales tax, your other largest revenue. So when we look at revenue, we'll look at the sales tax and we kind of put it, try to graph it out for you. And we see that same trend. This kind of matches the trend we saw on the other revenue because one of your big drivers is sales, sales tax during that time. So you can see we went thirty-two million from thirty-two million in twenty seventeen to forty-five million in twenty twenty-two to a projected forty-eight in twenty twenty-three. This excludes the whole harmless amount. So this is just pure sales tax. Okay? The other piece of that is that while this forty-eight million is projected, it, a portion of it, like forty-seven million to forty-eight million of that is still part of your balanced budget. So just like every year, when we project revenues, those revenues are projected to offset those expenditures. So we anticipate getting, we anticipated in budget getting a pretty healthy increase, and this is going to be even more than that. So the challenge then becomes part of the challenge, and we see we mapped it out. So under the per capita methodology, up to here, we know exactly where we're getting, or we knew we were going to get that growth because you can see that growth coming in. But under the new agreement, it takes us back to FY twenty-two and locks us in at that new amount. So now we know that during this, these transition years, exactly what we're going to get. And that goes down from the twenty-eight or forty-eight million, takes us down to the forty-five point nine. So during those transition years, we're going to be at forty-five point nine. Then when the adware comes in at full, in full force and we change completely over to that methodology, we drop from the forty-five point six, I'm sorry, almost forty-six million down to thirty-five point one. So that's the bigger of the two drop-offs. And the idea then is this becomes the new base. And then you can see it start to grow again. And that estimated growth that is included in there is about three percent. This assumes that the levy stays the same because if you remember, the adware tax rate is based on your tax levy. So it's a combination of values and tax rate that actually generate the tax bill. So we have anticipated that to continue to grow at, at three percent over time. Yes, sir.
Now, careful to, a point we need to make is when the revaluation is done, which is required to be done every eight years, right? So it's twenty twenty-five or six. You get, uh, tell them about the anticipated increase.
Sure.
You factor that into those projections?
We have not. So this is why I kind of highlighted this. When you do the revow, where you're at right now is you're somewhere between twelve and fifteen percent undervalued in your valuation from twenty eighteen. It's called the sales to assessment ratio, right? So that is a reasonable proxy estimation between what you would expect to get on the revow and where you're at now. So that fifteen percent growth, you can take, so if we were to say that seven, seventy-two million, then a fifteen percent growth on that. So assuming that you don't go back to a revenue neutral rate, that you hold the rates the same to generate that additional revenue. And that's, that's the illustrative point here is that the council, instead of assuming that increase in that growth, made the decision, as most, as a lot of governments in North Carolina do, to use a revenue neutral rate. So they reduced the rate to yield the same dollar value tax bill. Not perfectly because there's not a single error, not a single person's perfect in that equation. But on average, those folks are paying roughly the same bill, tax bill as they paid the year before. But this was that revenue giveback in that year. Question? Yes, sir.
Is there a calculation in the revow where citizens challenge or do their revaluations, you know, their yeah, contest? Is that, because I do.
Absolutely.
So is that somewhere that's, that's calculated in or is, is that much of a change in the past?
Typically not a significant amount of money from the assessed value. Because remember, assessed value is one thing. It takes, you know, a billion plus in assessed value to generate this level of revenue at the tax rate. So on a per, you know, at a per-house basis, a handful of those or even, you know, two or three hundred of those protests that take them back, you know, five percent or whatever that, when they were appealing their growth, that's not going to have a material impact. It'll impact absolutely, but not a material impact for that calculation. And when you go to establish your new value and your new tax rates at that time, we'll have an idea what all those are and we'll, we'll factor that into the conversation at that point. But this analysis doesn't include that at this, at this juncture. Any other questions on, on that? Okay, so going back to sales tax. So the big, kind of the, when we talk about this, and I'll show you on the slide in a couple of minutes, staff is discussing kind of what does a three-year strategy look like? Recognizing we have revow coming, recognizing we have some of those challenges that are out there. How do we get ourselves from really twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six? And what does that look like? And that's really the point of this slide is you have those two big drop-off years going from essentially what'll be forty-five point nine because of the first drop to the second. And then of course, it'll start growing over time. Now, it is important to note that when we go back, a lot of this growth we saw here is also surrendered. So if we, if we were, when we go back to this, we would see more of that growth if we kept at this certain point. And that's the red bars. So if we were to continue on the glide path and there was no change and we stayed on this per capita methodology all the way through, the red bars would keep you on that path, which again, went the wrong way, sorry. Again, kind of works with how you've been able to achieve this over the history and kind of in the last few years because of that strong growth and what that growth would be anticipated to be. So obviously, three percent of a higher number is a higher, a higher actual, right? So budgetary consideration. So what does that all mean in relationship on the revenue side to some of the things we know about? Employer of choice. You heard in the last year or two about the employer of choice program. You did a big market study. We're still working through that in the implementation. So there's a second continuation of that. You have your steps for fire and police. And really employer of choice becomes today about retention. The challenge in hiring employees is not just finding good candidates, but really keeping what we have. Where every month or every week, when we look at the personnel report and, and the positions are going vacant and that number is growing, we know we're not able to hold on to the people we have. And granted, it's not always about the money. But it is largely about the money. When we are talking to people that are leaving, one of the things we're hearing is it's about the money, it's about 401K. And we will talk through a little more detail about those in later date. The sales tax revenue loss, we already know about. We have the PWC emergency repayment of four million dollars. We believe that's going to come in two chunks, that they are going to hold back from their pilots of about two million before the end of this fiscal year and probably about two million before the end of twenty twenty-four. Yes, sir.
So got a letter from Chairwoman Garrett McMillan Friday? Are you referencing? That's a proposal. Okay, so council, basically they were proposing to pay that back beginning next month over six payments. But the, the meeting that we had was that they would come up with a proposal, bring it back to our boards to see if we encountered. I was going to ask you, the manager was back and his financial people could run a projection to make sure we could spread that out a bit over a couple of months cycle. So if not, but I do have to give some answer back. But I wanted him to have his financial model ran, if he had a more detailed compensation share. But I think putting that over a few budget cycles would not completely have a question during the needed, but of course they had to speak to you. So monthly they transfer the money. So what they're talking about is starting to deduct whatever that amount would be. So they give like a million a month, so they take out six hundred thousand of that, six months straight. Which have a more of an impact from now because it's not factored in to our projections for the June thirty. And it would, the balance of it would come out of the next budget year, which has constraints. So, you know, they would not, they, they would want it to be as least impactful as could. So, you know, if it's okay, when the manager gets back, we'll get his folks to give us some options to bring and share.
Doing it that way. We didn't do it, uh, completely.
Because this, this Kelly, do you think that was one of the proposals that she had? Was that, uh, the pilot has an increase to it. And with the rate change, pilot will increase more. And so they were going to run some projections to see if maybe that overage could be applied in a reasonable amount of time versus hard cuts like they have you had a chance to look at this option?
No, sir, I don't.
We have, we've looked at it. We haven't finalized, but the revenue growth from the pilot is about half a million dollars a year. So to recapture four million, it would take you about eight years to recapture just due to growth. So if we froze the pilot where it's at, and your last actual pilot. If you just use the growth. So you grow at about half a million a year in that pilot.
That's without rate change. That's that.
Right. So whenever there are rate change, you would add on top of that as part of that equation. But you, you got back about eleven point eight million in twenty twenty-two. Probably a little over twelve million plus in twenty twenty-three is where you'd be headed with the rate changes and everything else without holding back any money. So it's somewhere between that. You see about that four million represents or what they're proposing is about twenty percent, between fifteen and twenty percent.
Then mayor, then when the new tax rate kicks in in twenty-four, right? Does it change that six hundred thousand number?
You mean their new electrical rate?
No, I'm talking about, yes, well, no, I'm talking about.
Our pilot is a percentage of their revenue. So theirs won't change with a tax rate revow. Theirs will change with this new rate change they just voted on.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No questions, comments on that? Yes, sir, tell me.
I understand you said that Mr. Hughes might be here and I'd be better kind of ask PWC your questions. But I'm curious about what we consider an emergency transfer or just the different ways that, you know, PWC has an asset of the city. What are, what are some other things in our agreement that might account for this adware? To me, this like a hurts.
Right. So, so the legal looked at it now, and I'm just telling you, my official, when I law degree, it's in the middle of the finish. The statute gave us the authority to ask for it when we need our strength to ask for it instead of, now, it got complicated when that's a condition for getting it when we asked that they had a tax agreement that we signed. A question that legal will probably talk to you more specifically to is what agreement, uh, how does that agreement compare against what statute says you can. Now, the statute says you can do it without conditions. They put conditions. That evidently accepted that, so.
Right. And I'm just wondering, other than the emergency, state of emergency situation, there's probably other ways in which we utilize our asset to make up for things and.
Oh, economic development, they can transfer unlimited.
In my mind, if a hurricane hit. Oh, I understand. And it impacted our community. We could track it just like this. We lost a lot of money because we lost a lot of money because of this issue that we're having to deal with. Now the issue is not an act of God, but an act of the county. And all of a sudden, I think that we have another emergency on our hands that we might need to look at all of our assets that we have to see how we can utilize them to the full, to the fullest. I would want to know what those other options are there too.
Really, in the, based on the charter, because I think going to your larger point, that is why that language was added, of course, to protect the city from, if you will, just raiding their coffins. So it's very specific in terms of, it has to be declared state of emergency or economic development and in the. Yes, and that's why we, that's why we were able to do the transfer. But because of that, they asked that we enter into an agreement as related to the money. And part of that agreement was if we receive And part of that agreement was if we received half a dollar, other types of dollars that we receive, then we would pay them.
And my question's more about, maybe we need to ask, maybe we need to give ten million dollars over the next four years?
Say that we want to transfer from them to us? Uh, additional than, oh, not the transfer, oh. Well, separate conversation, I guess we're trying to really get to some conclusion on, on this piece.
Understood.
Like I said, they were not adverse to spreading this out. I don't think this is going to have a material effect on their finances. Uh, if we talk as a group, we come up with the option, that was what it was supposed to be, both would go back to the board. They went to the board, became what they sentenced. Now, of course, as we're having this discussion as a board, we need to see if we can maybe spread that out with three budget cycles, transition into.
Well, two thoughts there. One, if you lost, maybe it would be worth two years before that ten-year, ten million dollars ends. But, uh, the, the pilot is payment with taxes, right? Do, that's a agreement we're having to set up with the city. Do they have a similar situation with the county or do they pay? Does PWC, does the utility pay county taxes? Uh, so when the payment is new with taxes, so on their facility on Longmont Road and all other real estate and right of ways that they own, instead of them paying property taxes, being assessed property taxes, they pay us the same. So theoretically, if we see a ten, fifteen, twenty percent, whatever it is, increase in tax assessment across the county and the city, then.
Saying the pilot should be tied to that. But should, should be, but unfortunately it's baked into local bill of the charter. And any change like that would have to collect the value, which is great.
It's capped, there's some specific language related to the net position of the fund or the utility. It's not exactly based even on revenue, it's based on their balance sheet and it's limited to like two point four or five percent. So just like you're, I, I don't disagree with you. If their property value is going up, the return on investment to the city is the, you know, the ultimate original owner, then that makes perfect sense, but the way the bills have hemmed in that revenue, it makes it a challenge to, they, they're designed to keep us from getting large growth and to be able to take money out of that utility. So, and that's what they do. Now, we don't, you can't, they're not supposed to give us love. But to the councilman's point, they can do an emergency transfer.
Sure.
And that's what they did, and now with the strings that were attached, because we talked to the O C about this. Technically, it's not love, but they are here looking for their bank.
Cause, um, could you get back to the slide?
Absolutely.
The twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, when we had that nine million, nine and a half million go at one. Pandemic hit, spending habits changed, we got that. So where was the, um, additional savings?
For, in expenditure.
I'm making thirty-eight, thirty thousand dollars a year on average, and all of a sudden I get a five thousand dollar bonus. We might take half of it, take my family on vacation, we take that back and save it for a rainy day, so where's our savings?
And we'll, we'll bring the expenditure side because there was in that year, you did have some fund balance. There was some money that accrued to fund balance in that same year, and we'll talk through that, I think. Because there were additional costs related, but there were also, there was some additional revenue put back into your fund balance, which is what was used in some cases to do those other projects. But we'll bring that analysis back to you.
Cause as we move forward, you know, I've been told that we have contingency plans in place for when the county goes to add the board, because we knew it was a, it was a when, not a if, so I'd like to see those contingency plays assembled.
Can you go back to this one?
Mr. May, can I ask?
Yes, sir. No, go ahead, Councilman Tom.
I'm, I'm just, uh, I just want to tag along with, uh, council member Congress, you're saying. And I think it's wise that we pay our bills while we have the money. So I don't understand why we're even going for three or four cycles to try to pay back this money when it doesn't take effect for another three years. Why don't we just pay it off now while we have it?
Well, two, two things. One, remember there is, we don't know because we haven't got to the expense side yet of what the pension is going to be when you have this big dip in revenue, right? This drop-off. And so you don't have the benefit of, and you'll get in, they can explain this a lot better. You start collecting taxes from revow, you know, that fifteen percent revenue will be available. You'll also have bond revenue coming in before you start making debt service payment. So you're going to have more cash coming in, so I don't know, they could run an analysis whether you pay it now and deplete, and then remember we've got a ten percent policy that we don't go below that with fund balance, so we don't know where our percentage is. See what I mean? If you're just reaching the pot and pay it, you can't dip below ten percent as a city policy, eight percent as a state law, ten percent as a policy, twelve percent as a goal.
Right, but we're at twelve, right?
We don't know where we are. We don't know where we are? Well, they know, but we don't know where we are until we get to this process of it. Cause remember we've been in and out of, now we've been in and out of museums and for other stuff.
Reason I say it, because we had this conversation when we had our small. So I thought we were.
Well, last budget we were at around fourteen percent, I don't know where we are.
We pushed it to be like really close to policy. We pushed it really close to be at our council policy in our last budget.
And so we grab four and four million dollars out of that, I can assure you we're going to dip.
I'm pretty dug to reach one of them.
Yeah. There he is, here's all I answered.
Somebody answer the question.
So the answer to the question is, you're above your policy level.
Thank you.
The, we'll go over kind of the details of how that works because there's some commitments in that that aren't counted against that at this point that you've made that are future commitments, for instance, to the, um, the museum, and I can never remember the right name.
So what is, so what is, what is the fund balance?
The exact.
What, what, how much money? Give, tell me the money.
One percent, fifteen percent is in, in, as calculated money, percentage is probably.
I don't have that right in front of me right now, it's a little bit over. But I want to, but to do, to talk about that, you have to talk about it in context with the future commitments you've made that are on the books but not accounted against that fund balance number.
So if I can say, if what you're remembering, Captain, over anger, it was when we, when I brought the three point three million dollar appropriation for the Civil War Reconstruction Museum to you. And that, that appropriation, I think we would think, you guys, that it would drop you down to eleven point nine six percent. That was based on my projections of what fund balance was going to be because that was back in November. We didn't have firm year-end numbers at that point. So to answer your point, it, I re, I knew I was hearing it, I heard.
That's right. So another four million dollars would take that number down to close to state level, right?
It, it could, and that's why I think we need to have some briefing and conversation around it. I don't have that exact number right now, may have.
Scary guys. Yeah, so. But other question, Mr. Yates, real quick, explain this now, on this, this chart here. You have actual and you have adopted, right?
Yes, sir.
So every year you project what you think we'll get. So let's say we'll get a hundred million dollars this year coming up, just using it as a number. And you collect a hundred and ten.
Sure.
Right, there's more sales tax, more transfer, whatever, but you built your budget around a hundred.
Yes, sir.
Right, and you also project what you're going to spend, but let's say instead of spending a hundred, you spent ninety-five. So you've got actual numbers all the way across until this year, which is projected, which I understand because you don't have all the numbers in.
That's right.
Explain to them how that piece works, because you can also say, I'm looking here and you can estimate what you're going to get, but you can also, you know, be more conservative or more or less conservative on your estimates, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. So when the manager's recommended budget comes forward, it has to be balanced, so let's start with that, right? There are dials you turn to in revenue estimates and so forth. The, what the mayor is referring to is when we do that budget, we recommend and, and estimate revenue, in this case, a hundred and eighty-five million dollars against some version of the operating budget. Uh, what I can tell you is historically the city has budgeted some level of fund balance usage to also. So there's probably, for instance, a hundred and eighty-nine million dollars of expenditures to offset that. But through the years you go on, you have attrition, you have, things don't come in as you anticipated, you don't do projects, you don't do a number of things, revenue comes in a little better. For instance, in these years, I guarantee you that we did not estimate ninety-four million dollars of revenue in our governmental revenues that year, or we didn't see the debunked and sales tax coming. So when you have revenue over expenditures like that, what ends up happening is it falls to the fund balance, goes to your savings account. The thing that the council has done historically, just like when you funded the museum, you did the Black Voices project and you're starting to use that fund balance, you use your twelve and a half percent benchmark to say we can use that savings account down to that level and still feel comfortable that we have sufficient funds and liquidity. So you were able to do a lot of these projects with that overage you've used, oh, going back too far, that overage each year. So in this year, for instance, in twenty, let's say twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, because that's where we saw the big jump. If we estimated a hundred and seventy million dollars of revenue, then that seven million dollars plus whatever you saved on the expenditure side fell to fund balance. That's the cumulative savings account of expenditures and revenues, the difference between the two. And that's the discussion in our next council briefings. We will get into the fund balance and we'll talk about where we ended twenty twenty-two as we're finishing our audit work. And we will talk about where we think twenty twenty-three is going based on budget. But to your point, Mayor, you're absolutely right. We do our best estimate, reasonable estimate, against what we think the budget is for expenditures and revenues, and that typically plays out that you have more revenue than expenditures because most governments are conservative as they should be. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Okay. So going back to kind of the budgetary considerations, we have the county's ad valorem collection cost increase of about five hundred and fifty million, uh, five hundred and fifty thousand. You'll see that, I believe, on the twenty-fourth agenda. Ninety-seven million dollars in G O bond tax rate increase. So the voters approved the ninety-seven million dollars in the fall to be able to keep that tax rate as low as possible. And we'll do, um, an additional briefing on this. Then we need to set up that tax rate and start collecting that so the time value of money can help us generate enough revenue. Now, this is one of the dials and we'll talk about, this is one of the dials you can turn in the balancing considerations. We'll talk about enterprise funds. You have your transit fares and your cost recovery policy. We know we're moving from no fares to reenactment affairs to you have a cost recovery policy, a fare box recovery policy, and what it would look like then to charge the fares sufficient to cover your full costs and your transit program. So that'll be one of the things we'll be definitely talking about in our parks and recreation fees. Not only the activity fees, that kind of thing, but what are administrative costs look like in our, in our equation with the county? So some of the things in long-term strategies that staff is working through and management is working with. We want to develop.
Sorry, hold on, Mr. Yates, sorry, you have a question, Captain, over here.
Yes, sir.
Whenever we move back into funding for the buses, and it never was the transit self-sufficient anywhere, even with the money, we always had to keep getting. It needed some continued resources. What, when that does kick back in, what difference have you projected or have you projected it yet? On what difference would additional have to be added to it to keep it moving forward?
We haven't got all the way there yet because I think part of that discussion is going to be your cost repair box recovery policy. And, you know, you went from zero to your old rates. And then you can jump that all the way to your fare box, I think it's, is it fifteen percent?
It's twenty percent.
Twenty percent.
The transit policy is to strive for twenty percent recovery in the fares of the operating.
When does it go into effect?
It'll go into effect July. Um, and historically, we have collected around a million dollars of fares.
So when we do, when we come to the final recommendation, that'll be part of the conversations. If we, if we, we turn that lever or turn that knob and say, okay, if we charge more in the fare box, then that'll reduce our general fund commitment to the transit.
Now, whenever we go back to that on July one, will we still need to be doing some form of retrofitting? How the money would be collected, I mean, that was a conversation. And so that's, that still will be additional cost, or we can factor in this now.
So we are, as it stands right now, where we are getting ready to institute our gin fare collection boxes, the old collection boxes that we have. We are also pursuing new methods of collection. And it is our hope to go to, um, an online collection method that's not so cash handling intense. Um, because those gin fare boxes, they are expensive to maintain. It does take quite a bit of staff hours to.
No.
Process, okay? Gin fare is the, so when you step onto the bus, there's that box that's about waste time.
Right, right, right.
And you can either put your pass in or you can put the money in. Um, so we still have all those boxes and we're testing all of those to make sure that they still work. We have enough of them for our current buses. But we're also pursuing other ways of collecting those fares. And we would love to go to a complete cashless fare collection system because then we're not maintaining that equipment, we're not handling cash, which does take a lot of staff.
And, and when we were, when we were collecting, did you say, or you'll miss here, what was somewhat rate for a year?
So in our fares, traditionally, we collect around a million dollars a year. So nine hundred thousand to a million dollars of fare revenue is what we. Our general fund subsidy kind of ranges, but it's around the four to five million dollars a year. I did some quick math earlier today and in order to meet that twenty percent, um, policy goals without the general fund subsidy, we probably need to raise that, that rate to four dollars per, per ride. And it's a dollar twenty-five. That, that five million dollars that the general fund subsidizes transit is very impactful to our, just, and the fare.
Question, um, so out of additional resources we fund transit with, uh, is that all out of the general fund or when we do the tag, isn't there like twenty dollars that goes to transit?
So it's five dollars that goes to transit and that generates a little bit of six hundred thousand dollars a year. And that is out, that is, that goes straight to the transit fund, that's by state statute it has to. So the, the general fund subsidy is straight from the general fund.
Thank you. Uh, Council, uh, Councilman James?
So when was the last time that was changed? And as I said, my understanding is that it can be, um, or it can be up to twenty-five dollars if that rest, we charge five.
So the vehicle, the vehicle, um, license tag, we have a thirty-dollar capacity.
Okay.
We currently charge ten dollars.
Okay.
Five goes to transit and five goes to the general fund. The other twenty dollars of capacity that we could invoke would all have to be used on street and sidewalk maintenance only by state statute.
Okay. So, so, so when we do the ten dollars, you said five goes to transit and five goes to the general fund. But as we're sitting here talking about it, talking about it, it's literally, it goes to the general fund and then we put it back into transit.
I think that's plus another four.
Yeah, yeah. And it's six, you said it's six hundred thousand a year, so we get about one point two million. Okay, and then we raise.
The original, the five per transit was restricted by four transit.
Absolutely, absolutely. So then when we start putting fares back, we're looking that we're going to get about a million. So that would, that's basically two point two million going into the transit fund that costs us five million.
Well, if, um, six hundred is dedicated, as you always say, from the five. The other five, I would agree with you that you collect about one point two, but I wouldn't necessarily say go back. One point, that other six hundred thousand goes, we could say it goes to parking, we could say it goes.
But it's not.
I could, I would give one point.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're projecting to receive about six hundred and fifty dollars a year for each of the five dollar implements this year.
So if, I have one more question if I may. So can we do ten dollars towards transit and then if we raise it another five dollars, the five dollars can go to the general fund? Or the twenty dollars has to go to sidewalks?
Yes, and the latter.
All right, thank you.
Street maintenance, maybe sidewalks, that type of thing. So was your question, when did we last raise our transit fare?
Yes.
Twenty thirteen.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hunter. So does the, look on general statute, do you?
So does the North Carolina general statute dictate where that money goes?
Would they use the last tax?
Yes. I remember you had your Powellville money also, so eventually you run out of, you know, your capacity to do projects and get reimbursement. At that point, maybe stressed.
Which is kind of why we haven't, previous camps, we had not taken that option. So we have this one five dollars up to two, so we usually add our capacity.
All right, any other questions? Okay, so continuing on some of the longer term strategies, going back, because we know that based on our analysis, that this is a, this is a fundamental shift in the way the city will operate and the services the city provides. We're looking at this first as a three-year plan to get us to that base we were talking about and then to continue on from there. Um, one thing we have always in the back of our mind is maintaining that quality workforce. So that employer of choice, because if there's an economic downturn, if we have a challenge in that, we're going to look to our employees to be able to carry us through, just like we did with COVID, just like we have in the past. So we want to be sure we're maintaining that quality workforce. We'll always look at efficiencies and reductions because the strategy to be able to balance this isn't one strategy, it's a lot of strategies. That includes, like I said, efficiencies, reductions, uh, new revenue opportunities. You're talking about using a possibly vehicle, um, license year taxes and how those then could play in. Um, other opportunities is allowed by statute, review of existing rates. Fare box, as we mentioned earlier, water sewer, um, tax rates, all those different things. Um, looking at bridging with one-time funds to get us to either revow or some other version. Keeping in mind that we want to maintain our fund balance policy and there's kind of a couple of reasons for that. Not only because you need to be liquid and have funds during an emergency, but when we go to borrow some of that ninety-seven million dollars, the ratings is here and look at that, the L G C is going to look at that. They're going to say, what have you done with your fund balance? If you are paying for salaries, paying for operations with fund balance, they're not going to look upon that favor because you're paying your mortgage with your sa, with your savings account, which will eventually run out.
Chuck, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Because that slide is very detailed, except number two. Efficiencies and reductions. What's on the table, what's not on the table?
Well, I think that's some of the conversation that we, that we hope to have with you as a council. Because at the policy level, when we say efficiencies and reductions, this means looking at programs. What is it that you, you're not going to skim across the top of the city and scoop up what needs programs? So you're not going to skim across and take a little bit out of meals, take a little bit out of training and be able to make this up. You're not going to cut four management positions and make that up. What we're going to have to look at is deep surgical cuts. What, what are we going to stop doing to make up that difference? And it's some combination of all of these things. So if you're trying to make up two million dollars, as Mr. Jensen pointed out, you could raise the fare box revenue, generate a million. You could cut out, you know, take your pick on, we could cut out concerts, save half a million dollars. Then you could take out something else and that's half a million. So you kind of piece it together by doing that. But whatever you do in that has to be sustained because this isn't a one-time problem. This is an ongoing fundamental shift in the way the city, the city's funding structure works.
Until you get more revenue.
Until you get to the others, whether that comes through revow or, or the tax rate increases or something else happens. But at this point in our projections, it's a fundamental shift in the revenue that we know we're going to get. Yes, sir.
Wait, wait. Will you finish? I just had one question.
And then Councilman, go ahead, sir.
What are the eyes of the county going back to for capital?
Twelve million dollars. The county is reaping a windfall out of this equation.
Just on that, they're using this to fill their.
All right, so Councilman Mayor.
Yeah. As for its festivals, when we look at the Dogwood Festival, don't we have two? We have like a fall one and one that's for, for.
Then we'll give him fifteen thousand.
We only give him fifteen.
The issues, uh, with.
Well, we can look at everything.
The funding that you're thinking of, Mr. Here.
I'm just saying, we're looking at everything, aren't we? I mean.
The, the funding. The funding that you're thinking about the Dogwood Festival, not the red cash, the same concert. And so that will be firing police, sanitation, and things like that because it's a city, coast ninety.
He did say programs. And I was just, I just, it just came to my mind. I mean, because we're going to be looking at everything.
Well, it's, um, New Year's Eve was what, one eighty? Uh, June fifteenth was one twenty, uh, Fourth of July was fifty. It is, um, it, it does, it does, and we will cover that. I'm sure that it's part of his long-term strategy.
So then finally, kind of the last thing, one of the dials that you have at your disposal is, you can slow or cancel capital projects. We have a dedicated tax rate that goes to capital and I know, Mayor, you've talked about this. You have the ninety-seven million dollars, it's approved, but just because it's approved doesn't mean you have to issue it. You can put, you can shell those and wait. Now, I will remind you as you wait, inflation eats at your ability because ninety-seven million is a hard cap. You don't get to grow that over time. But when you look at these things, I can ju, in, in conjunction with each other, all of these strategies have to come together then to make up that difference. There's no one magic bullet you're going to be able to take to solve your problems. But it's probably a combination of all of these and that's, that's where staff is at. Um, and just a second, I'll give it back to the mayor and we can go through the parking lot, exercise discussion, and I'm going to scribe on the board for you. Um, but this is kind of where we are in the process. Our next council discussion, um, groups will be really, our briefings will be focused on looking at the ARPO money. And we'll be looking at, um, the fund balances. And then we'll be talking about some of those programs from your perspective that you see as, as kind of untouchable or your non-negotiable kind of thoughts in that process. So, um, with that, I, if there, are there any other questions before I hand it over to the mayor that I can help you with? Hey, Mayor, thank you.
So, Council, this part of it, uh, kind of wanted to hear from you. Uh, I sent out a questionnaire, you know, a probe you to ask if there were any questions prior to, but certainly we want to keep a list of questions. Uh, for parking lot, it worked real well before. The things that we were unsure of or they didn't have the answers to, we created a list of it and answered them at some, sometime along the course. Now remembering as he said, you know, uh, the C I P, you know, as we look at that, let's say we get a hundred dollars a week in a paycheck and five dollars and seven cents goes to work. Putting it up to save the bill or stuff or do something. Right off the bat to do that. Now, I get a Christmas bonus to where I get five hundred dollars. And I take it and the things that I was planning to do over time with my five dollars and seven cents, I now have five hundred dollars and I'm going, I'm going to do some of that, pay off some credit cards, I'm going to do two or three things. That's the forty million dollar ARPO money. So what I wanted to know, one of the questions I asked is, since we took, you know, one of the justifications for doing it that way. Because you remember when we said it, we were thinking, oh, we've got forty million dollars to do some amazing thing. So, you know, your money will go farther faster if we take it and we find out the usable, allowable things that are already planned and use it for that, right? We can leverage grants, we can do some other thing. So I asked a specific question. So it took pressure for five upcoming years because we did some things, building repair. Putting up that amount of dollars of that five dollars building repair. We, we said we're going to fix all the buildings that were on the list, okay? Uh, we're going to do things like that. So how much precaution did that create? And you do because the way the law is, you can change the five dollars, right? If we pay five years' worth of expenses upfront, it can be four dollars, three dollars, two dollars. Each one time we tick that dial, a dollar, that's a million four, roughly, million, three million. So make sure we look at that and know what we pay on the front end for, just to take that into consideration. Because the whole purpose of doing that was that the general fund could get some relief when we needed it and we just didn't know if we needed it, if that's, we needed. So I kind of have asked about that. That was question number one about where that is. Some things fitted that box and didn't, so I hope that they can tell us about it. What that whole thing looks like and I would suggest you get your C I P out of your current budget and, and just look across the line about, uh, during the offer meeting, we talked about what they were paying, uh, in advance. So make sure they were able to draw a bracket. Explain again what, Mr. Gates, I think he haduded to, I think he never spoke. On, on that, uh, last bond we just had, what was it, ninety-seven million? It says, we don't do anything with that money. We said that money. Did I hear you say that? If so, if you don't, then what does that money do for us?
Well, a couple of things.
It's just setting somewhere.
Well, there, there are, there are a couple of things. I'm touching on what you.
Because we have to use it for what we said we put out there to the citizens to blow on.
They authorize you in public safety, infrastructure, housing, broadly in the thirty, fifty seven month. One of the things that, uh, this council, every one of you have told everyone has been that you've lamented the fact that the past councils have not addressed issues. All of that, whether it be transit, whether it be street lights, paving, participation facilities. Uh, when you look at our C I P, the mayor's absolutely right. We saw that as an opportunity to deliver additional funds and get the ARPO money. We also saw it as an opportunity to address some of the community needs. Out of that forty million dollars, do you remember the three committees that the council set up? One of them was Economic Vitality. Um, I can't remember which one came over the million dollars of, for partnership with children. All of those were within the realm of what the money came to us from our government were for. To the mayor's point, we plan to cover that extensively about the ARPO uses, um, either, may, may start off, we'll say when, but I think we've already sorted your calendar already. Uh, and, um, we're going to answer that question for the mayor and we're saying, um, and anything that you can pull back, we can. You'll also remember this, we talked about ninety-seven million dollars, we took it to sixty million dollars in public safety needs. That's sixty million, probably a hundred and fifty million dollars. That's probably twenty-five million dollars of infrastructure needs, I was making fifty million dollars. Um, but, um, but as the mayor said, as everyone knows, you have to live the three million. And so that's where you'll have to go back and have to adjust the expectations of citizens. But I want to, um, see folks get ready to leave. I want to at least float on the part where I've started working on. The citizens have told you twice. Told you twice they want to move. They didn't only tell you they want to move, they voted to authorize you to increase your taxes twice, twice. They not only told you you were doing a good job, but they signed it off. A Russell Griffin change that would change the composition of the council. They told you. They were happy with what y'all were doing and how y'all were representing. You have a fundamental question and it's not my answer. It's not my answer. But we don't want to, do you want to be here in five years? I hope I'm here in five years, living, kicking and breathing, uh, five years in this job or not. But in five years, do you want that, that council to look back and say, this was the council that stopped and blinked? And we lost ground, the ninety-seven million dollars of, of funding that you voted authorized. We thought we were doing three fire stations and a nine-one-one center. Looking at what prices are and the lack of competition that we're getting from everything, uh, it's probably going to be a, a fire station. There were two fire stations and a nine-one-one center. That's where we're looking to try to see if we can combine a nine-one-one and a fire station so we can only have to buy land maybe once. Or can have some citizens, yeah, we're looking at that. But I'll tell you what, there's not many days that, um, I don't need to, this is one of the days I don't need. Y'all have a real, real decision to make in your head. But we may, y'all look at the big blue sheet that the mayor has, say, that doesn't even encompass everything. It doesn't encompass the energy design. It doesn't. We know we can't raise taxes out there. We can't do that. We know, we're not going to be able to raise taxes out of that hole that was on that ground. And I think that somewhere between the middle and the end, we're going to have to identify how we come up with some additional revenue. Or we're going to have to be serious about taking some things, um, off the table and, um, not talking about it in the first time. And I don't know what those are. It's getting into your own decision that you have to make. But I do want to share this with all folks.
Yeah, I just, I, I just wasn't getting the answer I wanted, I guess. Maybe that's why. Concerned with that, might as well be. I'll ask it again.
Well, I think what he said was that the, the ninety-seven million is some tax, a rate increase. So if it's three cent force or whatever it is. So you can start to collect that before you start issuing it then. Once they go to market and borrow the money, it's high rate, you know, money's going to be real expensive. So what you're bringing in, you're going to have to ask for more to cover that. So what he's saying is you'll have the benefit of receiving those new assessments for a while to be able to stack that up to start borrowing.
And not do anything.
Well, you're still doing it, but some stuff is just not ready to go.
Okay, okay, okay. Uh, Councilor Jensen, the end.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess what I need to say of everything that I'm hearing is we had an opportunity with the ARPO money and I'm very proud of what we've done with the ARPO money. And I'm not going to go back. I think everybody did a great job. And I think that the things that we have been doing with the A, A I T building, selling, is proving that we are doing, we, we are making people, you know, look at Fayetteville and want to come to Fayetteville. Because I will tell you, six years ago, we never thought that building would ever, I mean, did we, the ones that have been here, did we ever think that this would happen? And to say that they're going to put in it, we did something right and good with this ARPO money. But where I am having an issue about these meetings that we're having with budget is, number one, the four freshmen, they've never gone to real budget, never, never gone to real budget. This is all new. So, you know, I don't even know, I'm sure you probably gave them the budget of last year to go over, to look, to look at. But my question is, you know, we're having these meetings. Do you have a budget that you're thinking? Do you not, I mean, we're sitting here saying what we want, what we don't want, but you in your mind don't know what you want. I, it's kind of like, just tell me what your plan is and then I will tell you what parts I can go with it and what parts I can't go with it. Or, you know, but right now I just feel like I'm, I'm in the dark trying to hit a lull's eye and I don't even know where I'm trying to hit.
This is really.
But you don't do that without telling us the expenditure.
This is, um, this is, is, uh, is the same process we follow, um, every year. What makes it different is that we have a whole new system with government. Uh, we would have, um, had an opportunity to talk to you guys in small groups who had a C I P. We could, you would have done that in February with something I'm talking about capital projects when we were planning. Uh, we had our strategic planning session back then, then it's similar with that another. Because we got a full question, because everything is condensed around this concrete and we got some staffing too. Uh, that was the reason that we were having this meeting. But, um, um, I also know you and I know you and I know you and every other attorney councilman. I give you a number and you can't shake. You can't, uh, you can't shake. And, and it is, it becomes one of those things where until we are clear as to what we are going to recommend based upon what y'all are telling us, if we're listening very carefully, it, it becomes self-fulfilling. It really is very hard. If I told you ten cents, you'd freak completely out. Close up, go walk out of the door. If I told you five cents, you'd come back and say two. Or you'd say no. So I, I can't name something until I have something. But these meetings are very helpful.
Tax increase, zero.
Well, and, and if that is where the council goes and we're having these small group sessions, then literally it comes to you, you'll take your budget though and you'll have to tell them, you have some of the stuff that you have to change. Because, um, I heard from each of you that we want more service out of, out of planning and inspections and, and, and. We talked about we want more I Ts, we want to wreck some, we don't want to cut back on wreck center hours. I haven't forgotten what you said several years ago about the level of security we have with wreck centers and all the issues that we have. So I don't see how you can maintain any trajectory you're on. Looking at, if you can put that chart back, that's telling you right. This is not a one-time deal. This is not two years. This is not three years. This is not four years. This is not five years. And if you are not interested in raising the tax rate, then this happened to you this year, where the county is able to say, uh, we're able to go back and say that that's a change that the county made, we would not adjust the rate. Then you're not going to do it. You're not going to do it for me. And it, but again, that's your choice. And I want to give y'all all the information that we can give and, and once we answer the mayor's ARPO questions, that meeting we were talking about. I will be listening and if y'all come back and y'all uniformly say that, then I will give you all a budget that meets your interest. Because it does me no good whatsoever to give you a budget that is fifty percent right. And I think that when you look back at the budgets that the staff have put together for you since I've been here and you've been. And I think that when you look back at the budgets that the staff have put together for you since I've been here, you can look forward and take this. Y'all have almost unanimously supported those budgets because you were educated about why we did what we did. And we were very clear about what council members, and I don't see this anywhere. I don't want to give you a number now because you get stuck on a number without having the services.
Okay, all right. Councilor Mayor.
So, um, I was in, talked to that. And I was sitting over there saying, I don't, I don't think, I think what we should be putting in front of this is what direction was the council going to go? And and like what are the options? What are the clear options for us? Because what I've heard this evening was, I've heard a lot of questions about the budget, but nothing that really says, okay, council, based off of, you know, what this is, what direction do we, these are the two or three options that we can head in. One may look like a tax rate, tax increase. I'll balance the budget based on that. One may look like revenue neutral. I'll balance it off off of that tax increase. I'll balance it off of that. And one may look like whatever. I'll balance it off of that. But I think, well, at least for me, I need to know what are the distinct different options for us.
So to the, to the, to the, Councilor Mayor. This is man.
Do we, do we know? Is that, what are the options? Like I'm, I'm, I need an answer out of this. What options are there? Because it's just pieces, it's pieces. And I can't, I can't, for me, I can't make a decision off of pieces. I need to know a full picture of what direction, option A, option B, option this, and then kind of like, you know, Councilor Jensen said, but mine's, my vision view is a bit different.
So, so to the, to that perspective, to that point, uh, this manager, operationally, you have answers as to whether your departments are asking for a one percent increase, a two percent increase, or none, right? Uh, there's things that the council has to control, of course, are, are special projects and programs that they will fund. But you know whether your folks are coming in, if you've told everybody to hold the line as we, we were last year, or one or two percent, a three percent increase, you know whether you're planning to do a cost of living increase. You, you already know these things. So that could help fill in some of the pieces. And then, and then of course, council's got to make a decision as to whether you stop this program or you don't build this, this capital project right now. Or something different, or you find out once some of these questions are answered, that you really got more money, one time money available than you thought you had or vice versa. So where are you with that? Because I remember the previous budget years, they would come in and say, hey, this is the T I P, the technical stuff that we got to buy. We're going to buy a new program, uh, for the computer. We got new software. We're going to transition over to this. C I P police, they got new cars they want to buy. They got new radios. They got new vehicles. So where are your folks with that kind of stuff, operationally?
On the I T P and C I P, there's dedicated streaming money that goes in. What we're doing is to kind of present to those projects, which we're best means, I did change the city board. So that's not something that every year changes. It did change when we were looking at E R P, the whole enterprise wide resource planning system that we put in. The place our A D, um, system. And that was a one time, but briefly, I think that we made that adjustment. As it relates to new initiatives from department directors, I think I can almost safely say that no new initiatives were, are being considered. Um, they submit, they submitted quite a few. Um, there were a few that made their way in, but, um, they would be quickly pulled back out. Uh, what we're looking at for employee wages, um, and again, this is all on the table. Um, the numbers I think that we're hearing anywhere from three, four, five, six, seven, eight, all the way up to ten percent. I think P W C is talking about a nine percent increase to their employees, which were not P W C. The county, as you may know, is actually, uh, in the middle of conducting, um, a salary study the same thing as we were last year. And they're looking to probably make some dramatic changes there. Um, in an ideal world, if, um, things are all even, we would be looking at somewhere between recommending somewhere between three and five percent for employees. And probably will be also looking to ask you to consider increasing the four one K, um, for our employees, which is a recruitment tool, uh, particularly for the younger employees who don't stay anyplace for a year. They don't want to have a portability with their retirement. Even if that were a match, where it's, um, you contribute some and the city contributes some. Those are the kind of big areas we're looking at. But with a free million dollar hole, I think it is in the budget, um, just in what, sales tax money. And that, uh, going, as well as decreasing, I mean, increasing over years' time, that's what makes it hard. Um, and briefly about, um, Councilor member, we were questioning, um, those are, you nailed it perfectly as to what the scenarios are. One is we increased the revenues. I think that we've heard you clearly tonight. No one said no about us looking at fees. And so that means that the budget that you're likely going to get is going to have a fair box recovery of twenty percent according to your policy. Um, I don't necessarily know if the four dollars a ride, I, I, I need to look, we'll look at that some, but that is kind of scary, but that would be a consideration that we will do. You will have, um, an increase, uh, recommend increase to the solid waste fee to cover those costs. As you may recall, last year, we were recommending an increase to the solid waste fee and asked for it and the council said, um, no. Um, it's, um, I don't know how much it was that we had requested last year, but.
But I don't target it, but I think you said no to the solid waste fee because months prior to that, we increased it. So that we did not have to necessarily. I, I remember we increased it months before, after the request came.
Well, you said the fee once, you said the fee once, the third of budget process, because it has to be due. Uh, I can go back and, and let me, let me remember what it was that we discussed. But we are looking at, um, solid wastes and we're also, um, potentially looking at a stormwater as well to start, um, gathering money to fund some of these projects or to, uh, but I'm not sure yet exactly how much that is out of the, where we're finalizing at at the moment. So those are main fees. Um, we will also take a look, um, at the additional capacity having vehicle licensing, uh, license plate fee, uh, to see whether or not that could be an opportunity for us to, um, further enhance some sidewalk and infrastructure issues that may allow us to borrow less money potentially over here, funded in a different regard. Um, but we are, but without doing more, we're already, um, collecting, it's about five million dollars, I believe, about from Powellville or Dallas, five or six feet from Powellville. And, um, we actually have to work to give them receipts to show how we're spending that money. So it's not just, here's your money, you just walk away.
Don't ask the budget to do, budget to have additional money for Powellville, because they're going to be adding electric bill tax and Uber tax.
Well, they already charged for electric bill. Wasn't they ever paid gas for? Hundred and forty dollars a year just to drive that up.
Oh, sorry. Councilor Jensen.
So I have a question and just to try to get my thoughts together whenever we do get the budget. If the county did not change to Avalon, would we be having this discussion about raising taxes?
You would be looking at what you want to do for ninety seven million dollars, your honor, our friend, but I would not have come back. Two, adjust the fees, the state fund, because it's enterprise fund, but I would not have been looking at that.
So what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is, or what I'm understanding is, if the county would have stayed, if we wouldn't have gone to Avalon, that we prob, we would have raised fees, but we would not have been looking for a tax property, um, increase. Um, so that would not be other than our G I lines. So what I'm seeing on this chart here is that we are looking that we need to make up about nine million dollars. Is that correct?
When we get out to the out years, it's.
Out here. So you're really looking at, um, anywhere between ten and twelve million.
Okay, so ten and twelve million that we need to make up for the next three years, right?
Or that you'll need to make up forever.
In the next.
In perpetua, yeah. That you'll need to get your new revenue base adjusted up so that you can continue that service.
So when we do the revow, we did the numbers. So it looked like we were going to get ten point, you know, just. It was ten point eight hundred thousand, you know, ten point, ten million dollars, almost eleven million dollars. So that kind of makes it up. So we put it into three years that we're trying to add up. We're looking at, we're looking at. I, I just think that was in the meeting.
We in the meeting, but we. Yeah, go ahead. We saw.
I, I. So.
No, that was a good.
Yeah, I mean, they're sitting there talking and I'm trying to.
That's okay.
So we got two points, two points.
So the revow, I think where you were going down, but then to talk to many of you is that you cannot see. These are multi-year strategy. Well, within three years, we're going to be back at the revow on one. If the council does not roll back to a revenue neutral, that's a big yet. Every time that I've been here since two thousand and four, the council has rolled back to revenue. This is a completely different viewpoint that we have. But again, that was a different council who had.
Let's explain that. So I, I was sitting here at this table. We did go with revenue neutral. The reason why we went revenue neutral is because houses went down twenty percent, but businesses went up twenty percent. And if we would have not been revenue neutral, the businesses and would have gone up almost forty percent because their evaluation went up plus the amount that we baited up. So that is why that happened.
Well, it was also too, we were under the sales tax agreement that was unnecessary growth, not a lot of unnecessary growth. Um, but where we are now, you're looking at a significantly, um, and the council at that time, when we get to, to the revaluation, had to make that decision as well. You don't have to go maintain these also revenue.
So I guess my point that I was making is when we do do the revow, we are looking probably about ten million dollars. And that revow will be taking place within the next three years, if possible, might take place next year, um, which it can. And so, and if I split it up, that's four million dollars this year that we have to add up to get to where we need to be. So it's not such a gloom and doom, is what I'm trying to say, that we can work really.
All right. So, uh, Councilor Mahakros, this is Aaron Thompson.
Yeah, Mr. Manager, you weren't here for my questions. I don't see the part number one. Councilor Jensen just mentioned his kind of best and the, the one question is, is when that revaluation takes place. That's going to make up a large percentage of that sales tax loss, I think. Uh, the other is, if the sales tax, the chart is on the screen right now. So during the pandemic, when the sales tax moved from thirty six million to forty five million, nine, nine million dollar increase term would happen. Um, so where did that, where did we park some of that money to save?
Well, I would say that we also look at, um, the growth in the budget every year. Um, it didn't evacuate.
I know it's probably hidden somewhere. That's why I need you to not have.
No, it's, it's not. And I, I will be, uh, that's one of the things that, that I, I joke a lot, but I don't joke about my numbers. And, uh, I'll tell you that, uh, I want y'all to make sure you're satisfied with every number that's in the budget. If you got to pull somebody else in, that any which way you look at it, we make a mistake, we make a mistake. But we've not made one yet when we come to this stage. And, uh, in the past, but y'all have, because if you ask for a tax rate increase, you've got to be able to tell folks, we looked at them every week and turned them down. And if you don't, then you need to say, as Ms. Jensen just said, the reason we did not do that is because the impact that would have on businesses. That's where I want y'all, that's y'all's decision. I'm going to arm y'all with the data. I'm going to arm y'all with the message. And y'all take it out, go for it. But I really, in y'all's seriousness, there's no question that y'all can ask me or staff that we're going to get upset about it and try to hide anything from you because, uh, this is the biggest thing that y'all's revenue. This is what the P L's always, does anyone remember what this room used to look like? Does it look better now? This was, uh, about fifteen thousand. Uh, it's lights and ceiling tile and tech and carpet. I mean, it's, um, we, we just, this is, this has been something that's been along us that we did not understand. But I, I'm sorry, did y'all know?
Yeah, so I mean, we knew that, we knew this was coming. It was a matter of when and not, uh, not if. So I was told for many months that we had contingency plans in place. So I'd like to see what this contingency.
So, Councilor, where, Aaron, it comes.
If you would, uh, give me the year, but before I myself personally can look at any form of entertainment, tax rate increase, I want to know, all the tax increases. We just had that minus seven being, what was that, four cents?
We haven't adjusted yet.
Four, four cents. I know we sold it to the people as three point five to four cents, something like that. So whenever we consider that, I would like to have, uh, when that is that ninety seven, that, that, uh, tax increase, okay, what that tax increase is. I want to know what the, the tax increase is or was for thirty seven million.
One point four two or one point, it's probably one point four two that I've been.
Right, except on, they're right, I'm going to write that down. And then I want to know, uh, what the last tax increase was for, uh, solid waste and stormwater and when it was.
Um, I just, there's a, there was one additional tax rate increase that funded the additional police officers. Um, yeah, the stormwater, um, stormwater fee, uh, first year I was here as an interim, we, we almost locked up on a five, five other revenue increase stormwater.
And I'm really trying to stay within the last, I should say about the last eight years. That's what I'm counting. I don't want to go.
And the solid waste fee is going to be, is going to show some dramatic increases because at one time, as you'll recall, the general fund subsidizes, um, in stormwater, solid waste enterprise fund. And, um, that was also one of the ways that we were able to balance the budget. It said everything that we could put into enterprise fund, solid waste and, um, stormwater, including the staff and their vehicles, we pushed that under that fee. So that then freed up general fund money to start to go into. Uh, we even increased the, um, vacancy rates. Uh, we, um, don't budget a hundred percent of staff. We budget knowing that we will have vacancies. So we only budget, um, what's a ten percent? Ten percent, uh, with ninety percent of, of actual payroll because we know that, well, portions of the year we're going to be without staff. Now, we, I'm somewhat smart. Don't let me do that in the fire department.
We do not do this fire department, the council, of course, um, or the Parks and Rec district.
No, because we know that, um, they traditionally are not that, that, that.
All right, Councilor Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, my training thought in this process is I don't want to waste money trying to save. So the staff can give us a projection of all capital field projects that have not been completed. How much we invested in that capital so far? How much left we still have? That's it.
Okay. All right. Uh, Councilor, finish it here.
Um, one of my heart stops is ninety seven million. Going, breaking that four cent line. So I know that the Fed tax rate is having an impact on that. So maybe that means one less mark. I don't know. Whatever that number is, um, I went to a lot of those town halls that we had and I told everyone four cents or less. If it's not four cents or less, then, uh, I have a problem. On the same side, I think that we all have little reasons like I do for not breaking that four cent line. With that in mind, I hear our city manager, when he says, unlike any other future year, we have an opportunity to say, if the county hadn't, we wouldn't be. That makes less and less sense every subsequent year. So I think it's important that we take it seriously after we unearth and uncover every stone, that we also start to get comfortable saying why we're having to probably make some tough calls. And even though we're not going to touch that four cents, there might be another penny or two coming for whatever reason, or not whatever reason, for the reason of the county. Um.
That's half the boost of douche dollars that we could have used.
Right. So it's not just a crazy number. It's something that makes sense. Let me finish before, uh, who will make more commentary. That's my last bit of commentary. Um, and then the new council members get an even more cushion because we can point to the old council and say, y'all should have known, you know, gambled every year for the past ten, fifteen years. So that's. Because we can point to the old council and say, y'all should know, y'all gambled every year for the past ten, fifteen years. So that's just a side note. Um, but the point, the point being that we've, we've got to be clear with people and it becomes less and less clear every subsequent year. We're going to be playing hot potato if we want to and not raise taxes, but it's eventually going to explode in someone's lap two to four years from now. And maybe not every council member plans to be on council by then. Whoever's on council is going to end up having to deal with that big steep drop in twenty twenty six. Um, and I think you'll be responsible for playing that game.
Well, I read that, it, it made point, it didn't take any.
And then forget what I said about PWC earlier. I looked at the statute, the mayor would have to state an emergency, that's the only way. So, forget what I said about that. So, oh, one more thing for the thing, I'm sorry, Mayor, I apologize. Last thing. You said five million dollars we got one time for selling Festival Plaza.
It was five, five million.
Makes me want to see what else we don't, we can live without asset wise.
Alright, thank you, Councilor Benavente. Uh, so two, two things I wanted to make sure were added to there. Um, one, uh, the same way we are projecting what happens in FY twenty twenty six, when the revenues change. We need to also bake in what Councilor Jensen said about when the reevaluation happens. There's statutory requirements that that be done only before twenty six.
Point is, that's the county's discretion to say when.
Yeah, but then, but the state tells them you have to reevaluate. So I remember when they, when they revalued, no, every, every eight years. So they did it in twenty eighteen or seventeen, so it's.
It will happen before.
Or only before that, around that time. Yeah, and I remember we had to make budget adjustments because the values went down. What they're talking about with revenue neutrists, for you to bring in some of that money, you'd have to increase or decrease the rate. And so I remember we, instead of leaving the rate at where it was, we, we ticked it down, so.
I have a feeling they're not going to do it early.
Well, uh, but they, even if they did it to the la, at the last possible legal time, you need to factor in that you're going to get ten to fifteen percent. It's like we're taking ten or fifteen percent away from the settlement.
Yes, sir.
So, um, we need to stay that in mind. Also too, um, we used some creative things before. Uh, one time bonuses uh for staff, you know, because you can't pay a recurring expense. Once you take somebody's salary up, it's up. Very rarely can you take it back down. Um, and that's money that you got to have every year. We were able to use some one time bonuses before. I do agree the 401K probably needs to be looked at. I think we're one of the lowest in the state on that, one percent contribution. But we need that number in order to be able to start having real serious conversations. So I would appreciate it as they had that awkward dollar number about those CIP items and to, and to what. What's funded, what's not funded, what's partially funded by Councilor Thompson. We need some specifics on that. Any funds across the board with fund balances, I think you've got that question up there. Um, so, alright, and then, um. Anything else that we didn't capture that you all wanted to needed to know, uh. There, because that's the parking lot there, so they'll have answers for this stuff.
How soon will we get, will we get these answers back before, I'm sorry, did I speak?
Yes, ma'am. I got Councilor Mahon up there, didn't you?
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so we're talking about enterprise funds and possibly increasing fees. So this discussion for solid waste goes back to a couple of months ago, we were talking about the unlimited yard waste and, and some close second help from the back. And I know a lot of these programs are popular with some residents, but that was why I took the position I took, because I knew. Going with staff's recommendation, we're likely to still have a modest solid waste fee increase there. We continue business as usual, the old way, it was probably double or triple, whatever that, I think it's two hundred twenty five dollars anyway. Um, but with stormwater, from the stormwater advisory board for like two and a half years, we've been pleading with. Staff and anybody that would listen, I think we sent a resolution to the former council to try to go to a tiered system. Uh, so you're not raising a stormwater fee across the board. Uh, you're doing a tiered system based on impervious, um, area. Uh, because right now you could have a thousand square foot house on a tenth of an acre lot, you're paying seventy two dollars a year. If you have a, a ten acre tract with a, with a ten thousand square foot house, you're paying seventy two. So that's not necessarily fair in any way. Um, and I'm told by staff, I asked them. My last stormwater committee meeting, I'm not mistaken, either the last one or the one before that, uh, where we are with that, they're still talking about. A year plus out, so I don't know what the whole of this, the, the council needs to take. Putting direction in matter of the world, but I think rather than universally raising the stormwater fee across the board, going to a tiered system makes a lot of sense. We often talk about pure cities and uh pretty much every pure city, there might be another proceeding, see? That's just not too safe.
Alright, Councilor, Councilor Meehan.
No, I just wanted to ask, how soon do we plan to get these, these answers back to these questions? To be able to prepare for the next set of budget meetings? Um, and I know this probably is a lot of work, but I think given the, the status of the budget, um, we, we, we probably need that sooner than.
There are two phases to budget that we mentioned during stormwater, during our sessions. One is what we lead up to get managers recommend the budget, and then once that is done, what council needs. So these questions are mixed above for those. But so to answer your question specifically, we're going to try to get you this information on the office stuff. We will need you next time. Um, some of it will have, but we'll get it to you as fast as we can. Um, and the others, um, we, again, we'll, you understand time to the essence of what we said, we'll be thinking about first of next week anyways. That would be the.
Yeah, I have a question. Have we anticipated the city's growth in the next three years to bring more capital?
We, um.
How do we anticipate?
When we looked at the growth and the property um tax um that we collect. Jeff had a slide that showed a slide of one and a half, two million dollars, is that right, people? A year. And that is the, the organic growth of, you add a room on your house or a new apartment complex, a building comes along. So we, we've seen some of that, and that also would be in budget modeling about where that growth looks at. But uh, we're really hoping for some game changers.
Alright, Councilor Presecs, time. Uh, the Cates and team, the manager have done a great job. We want to see them get a most good journey.
Most good journey.
Alright.
Thank you so much.
That's our plan in tomorrow. We'll plan for tomorrow and we'll talk about the article funds and to pick the funds out.
Alright, I've had some of this critical information that we asked.
No, I have a one thing to say, you cannot ask.